All right, we'll go ahead and call our school board meeting to order at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, May the 3rd. I'd like to thank everyone who's joined us for this evening, this meeting in the boardroom and the overflow area at James Wood Middle School Auditorium through the livestream or on the school division's YouTube channel. Due to ongoing construction, the restrooms at the administration building are unavailable for use this evening. Those who need to use the restroom may utilize the facilities outside of the doors to my right or use the restrooms at James Wood Middle School. To use the restrooms at the school, you should enter the school through the doors next to the cafeteria under the canopy at the parent pickup drop-off area. Restrooms are located in the hallway, in the front hallway of the school and are available for use. Apologies for the inconvenience. Ms. Martin has requested the board allow her to participate in tonight's meeting electronically from her home due to an illness. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to allow Ms. Martin to attend virtually.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been made and properly seconded that we allow Ms. Martin to attend the meeting electronically from her home due to an illness. Any discussion? All right, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Welcome to the meeting, Ms. Martin.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. All right, the next item that we have before us is the approval of an agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda presented before us and it's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we will proceed to vote on the agenda that is presented to us. All in favor of approving the agenda, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. With that, Mr. Comstock.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the county school board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following: to review and discuss individual personnel matters, including appointments, reappointments, resignations, substitutes, and the evaluation of the superintendent pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A1.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been made and properly seconded that we move into closed session for the reasons Mr. Comstock presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of moving into closed session, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we'll be in closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board reconvene from closed session.
All right, we have a motion to reconvene from closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, proceed on a vote to move, proceed on a vote to reconvene from closed session. All in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we are in open session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
We've heard Mr. Comstock's motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion before us. And, Mr. Edwards.
Mr. Lake?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, we have one motion coming out of closed session, and that is I move to approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
All right, we've heard the motion from Mr. Comstock. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been made and properly seconded that we approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, those are approved. Please join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. Sabine, it's my understanding we have a few special guests this evening.
Yes, Sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and public. It's my pleasure to announce two principal changes that will take effect this coming July, July the first, and this is due to two retirements of principals. First, I'd like to mention that Sean Muir has been named the new principal of Indian Hollow Elementary School, and Dr. Tabitha Reeves has been named the new program administrator at Northwestern Regional Educational Programs, or NREP, at Cinsiny Roads School. We do have, I believe, Dr. Reeves is here. Ask her to stand as I share some additional things. Certainly, we congratulate her. Mrs. Reeves has served as the assistant program director at NREP since 2018, prior to coming to Frederick County. She had extensive experience, 15 years, I believe, in Virginia Beach in a variety of special ed roles, including teacher, special ed department chair, and also played several roles at central office level in terms of compliance. So, we were able to introduce Dr. Reeves to the faculty last week, and she received a very warm welcome. A familiar face there at MREP, so congratulations, Dr. Reeves. Not with us tonight, but certainly want to take the opportunity to extend some comments regarding Mrs. Sean Moore, who has more than 28 years of experience as an educator and a school leader. She's returning to Virginia after spending the past seven years as the assistant principal at Massah Middle School in Castle Rock, Colorado. Prior to assuming her current position, Ms. Muir served as an assistant principal at Greenbrier and Johnson Elementary School in Charlottesville from 2011 to 2015, and Mullen Elementary School in Manassas from 2008 to 2011. She also has more than 17 years of experience as a classroom teacher in kindergarten through fifth grade, and has served as a gifted education teacher for students in grades K through five. Extensive background in reading. She was able to meet with the staff virtually earlier today, and they're so excited. It was definitely a warm welcome. So, please, join me in congratulating our two newest principals.
Well, Dr. Reeves, want to congratulate you on the new capacity here as part of our FCPS family, and excited for the work that you will continue to do in support of our students. And, Ms. Muir is a former Indian Hollow Eagle myself, excited for her to join us in that role in the FCPS family. So, thank you. Our next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
All right. All right, we have a motion that's been made to approve the consent agenda. It's been provided a second. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the consent agenda before us. All in favor of approving, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. All right, I believe we have some additional guests with us this evening.
Well, good evening again, and welcome to our Awards of Excellence program. After a long hiatus, we're pleased to take this time from this evening's meeting to recognize some of the outstanding achievements of our students, our teachers, and staff. Typically, we hold an Awards of Excellence recognition at school board meeting each month, but we've been able to do so for some time now due to the pandemic, that we are today where we can return to some normalcy and recognize our students and staff. Before we proceed, I would like to ask that everyone stay here through the entire Awards of Excellence program out of respect for each individual who is going to be recognized. Once we've completed all the presentations, we'll give you an opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. And certainly, if you want to stay and enjoy our meeting, you're welcome to stay as well. But we'll give you that opportunity to leave if you'd like to start the rest of your evening. I'd like to start by recognizing one of our phenomenal girls' basketball teams. And in March, the Millbrook High School girls' basketball team competed in the Virginia High School League Class Four State Championship game at the Siegel Center on the campus of Virginia Commonwealth University in Richmond. The team came up just short in its bid for a state championship following Kings Fork, '71 to '67. I must say it was a thriller. So, thank you, girls, for that game, and also a season of excellence. Millbrook represented certainly Frederick County Public Schools well, and you finished a tremendous season with a record of 25 and 3. I'd like to extend our congratulations on an outstanding season to our Millbrook girls. And now, as I recognize you individually, I ask that you come forward, shake the hand of our Chair, Chairman Monk, receive your certificate, and remain standing up here in front of the board until the full team can be recognized. Start off with Jada Arrington. Head coach, Mr. Eric Green. Once again, congratulations on a great season. In February, Shorando High School wrestlers Keegan Judd and Anthony Luciani won Class Four A state championships. Judd won the 145-pound title while Luciani captured the 120-pound championship. As a team, Shorando finished second in the state championship, which was the highest finish ever in the school's history. Also, I'd like to extend our thanks to Shorando High School wrestling coach Brian Kibler. At this time, I'd ask for Keegan and Anthony to come forward, as well as their coach. Pose for a nice shot. Yes, congratulations. Outstanding, guys. Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association holds an art contest to recognize the artistic talents of students across the state. The following students had their artworks selected to represent Frederick County Public Schools in the competition. Here tonight, and we actually had several winners, but here tonight, we'll recognize McKenna Leighton, Robert E. Ailer Middle School. McKenna's piece was entitled "Dressage," which was entered into the middle school competition where her creation won second place. McKenna. And we'll have McKenna pose for a picture there with the Chair. Congratulations. James Wood High School student Danilo Rincon Camacho has been named a National Merit Scholarship finalist as a part of the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program. Of the approximately 1.5 million entrants in the National Merit Scholarship Program, only about 15,000 advanced to the finalist standing. Students with the highest selection index scores on the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test qualify for recognition in the program. All right, well, Danilo, if you could come forward. Amanda Orsini of Bass Hoover Elementary School, and Ashley Rudolph of Indian Hollow Elementary School, and Katie Bethke of Millbrook High School have earned National Board Certification. National Board Certification is a voluntary assessment program designed to develop, recognize, and retain accomplishment, accomplished teachers, and is the highest credential in the teaching profession. Mrs. Orsini, Mrs. Rudolph, and Mrs. Bethke are part of a group of over 125,000 teachers nationally, and only 3,917 teachers in Virginia to earn this certification in 2020. nationally, and only 3,917 teachers in Virginia to earn this certification in 2022. Frederick County Public Schools now employs seventeen National Board Certified Teachers. Please come forward so we can recognize you. Yeah, congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you. I don't know about you all, but it does my heart's good to be able to recognize students and teachers for the work that they've done now back as we exit the pandemic here. So thankful for the work that our teachers are doing to engage students at a holistic level. And we saw that tonight. We have student athletes, we have artists, we've got students that are receiving academic recognition, and it's just so powerful to see the engagement at that level. And for our teachers to engage in the continued professional development and credentialing work in the midst of a pandemic is impressive. So, at that, this point, I'll provide an opportunity for you all, if you'd like to segue and enjoy the rest of your evening. You're welcome to do so now, and we'll continue. Also, just want to recognize, you know, Mr. Rudy walking out, the dedication of some of our school administrators to be here to recognize students and, you know, sitting in the back, just here to support that student speaks volumes. So, appreciate that. With that, we'll move on to the next item of our agenda, is citizen comments. Wanted to share from the school division, you know, during the public portion of last week's Board of Supervisors meeting, a number of comments were made about library books and content that is concerning. I wanted to share that information regarding how textbooks and other materials, including those available in library and media centers, are selected, is included in School Board Policy 304P. In addition, Regulation 304R through C includes information on the process that is to be followed, should an individual want to have the use of certain educational materials, including library books, reconsidered. That process, as it's outlined, begins at the school level with the school principal. And all of the division's school policies are available on the FCPS website. A link to the policy manual can be found under the About header on the school division's homepage. And I want to, as a supporter of having parents involved in their child's education, I want to thank folks for bringing that forward, and also want to encourage folks, if they do have a concern, to follow through that process, in which other parents and peers will be able to review those materials, and we'll be able to provide a good decision that will benefit our community. With that, the Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comment at each monthly meeting. In order to allow the board sufficient time for its other business, the total time allotted for public comment will generally be limited to twenty minutes. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes. Those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the chair, the speaker should clearly state their last name, or their name residing district and the subject of their comments. All comments are to be addressed to the chair. This board will receive comments, but will not respond to questions or engage in a dialogue. This is an opportunity to be heard, and the board will refer any issues or concerns to staff or appropriate committees. The school board is committed to showing appropriate respect and courtesy to all citizens, and speakers are expected to show appropriate respect and courtesy to the board in return. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker, our meeting by asking questions or making comments, and school board meetings are taped recorded for the purpose of clarification and the development of the official minutes. All right, the first speaker on my list is Ed Stuniven.
Hey, thank you for the time to be up here this morning, or this evening. It's been a long day. The reason, Ed Stuniven, Back Creek District, and I'm going to speak on the curriculum tonight. I raised four kids and put them all through the school system, and now I have two grandchildren in this school system. One's getting ready to go into sixth grade, one's getting ready to go into ninth grade. Couple weeks ago, we took my granddaughter, who has never been to Gettysburg, to Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, and as a Civil War reenactor, Gettysburg holds a special place in my heart. What amazed me was she had no idea who Robert E. Lee was, she had no idea who George Mead was, and she saw something that said "Gettysburg Address", and she had no idea what the Gettysburg Address was. Now, granted, she's still in elementary school, but when all my kids went through, they knew all this stuff. And it amazes me that she knew none of it, not even who Robert E. Lee was. She had never heard of John Brown and Harper's Ferry raid. And I was, I was appalled. I mean, this is Virginia, where all this stuff took place, and they knew, she knew absolutely nothing about it. And then I went and looked at some of the curriculum that's on the website, and some of the things that I read tended to, to me, to smack of the sixteen-nineteen project, and I don't know what we're teaching these kids, but all I can think is some of it's revisionist history. The only thing that she did know, that she could relate to me, was that the Confederates were the bad guys. I had relatives that fought in the Fourth Virginia, the Forty-Fifth Virginia, the Seventeenth Virginia Cavalry, the Third Tennessee, and my relatives did not fight and die for their direct descendants to be told they were the bad guys. I don't know what we're teaching in this school. As I said, you all have made me a student of this board, and I intend to stick around and figure out what's going on. And I intend to do my part as a citizen to make sure that you all do your part as a school board. But it really upsets me when my granddaughter has gone to school now for six years, five years, whatever it is, and can't even say who Robert E. Lee is or what the Gettysburg Address is. I don't know what we're teaching these kids, but it certainly shouldn't be leftist ideology that the Confederates were the bad guys. I mean, that's my personal opinion as a Civil War reenactor and as a descendant of Confederate soldiers. That's the way I feel about it. But I don't know what we're teaching, but it just amazes me because when I was in elementary school back in the nineteen-seventies, I knew all those things when I got into sixth grade. So, I don't know what we're teaching our kids, but it really upsets me. So, I'm just letting you know where I'm coming from. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dave Berthwaite.
David Berthwaite, Gainesboro District. What I'd like to speak to you about real quickly, and I'm not going to waste a whole lot of time, I'm not going to ramble on. There seems to be a difficulty with getting a school budget passed through the Board of Supervisors. Some of you folks act like it's amazing to you that you're not getting your way. Maybe you should think about how you present yourselves. We have board members who will not account for their prior misconduct, misdeeds. We have other people who demand a code of conduct passed, and they can't seem to abide by it. The days of the rubber stamp are over, and you might be able to bring in your little cheering crowd, but the folks in this county are on to you. And they call the Board of Supervisors, and they want accountability. We want transparency. Anything less than 100% transparency is non-transparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Della Dehaven.
Thank you, Chairman Monk. I'm from the Gainesboro District. My name is Della Dehaven, and I have been a lifelong resident of Frederick County. I have a few things to say that I organized, and I also want to add that for the last year, I've been attending faithfully the school board meeting and the Board of Supervisor meeting, which I am, I am so interested at this point in my life, and I can tell you that-
Can you, can you adjust this? I'm sorry.
Can you hear me? Is it okay?
A little bit down.
Is that all right? I'm sorry, thank you. I can tell you that at this point in my life, my son has gone through the public schools, gone to college, graduated, lives a happy life. I have two little grandchildren who are the love of my life, and I've probably been out of college before some of you were born, and that's okay, because they really were institutions of higher learning. So, I made a few little quick comments. I'm not going to beat the dead horse either. I enjoyed a forty-five-year career in business management, and I want to tell you that not once, not ever, and this included financial responsibility and budgeting, not once, not ever, did I refer to any task in financial budgeting, resourcing, and investigation as nonsense. And although I respect you, Mr. Hester, being chairman of that finance committee, watching that meeting last night was very disappointing. We have awakened to watch what is happening and what is being done, and the comments, and the listening, and the posturing. It's important. We are called to a higher level of excellence. I was, and you are, and you are elected, and we appreciate your service, but we also want the respect that we deserve as the people who actually vote in the community. So, if you doubt the validity of nonsense three times, take a check at the video. Understanding the process and providing the answers to physical issues is an important responsibility. We all have it. We all have it in a household where we live, and also into your responsibility as chairman and co-chair to answer questions. And if we need to get to that point to move into approving that process and being satisfying the Board of Supervisors, then, you know, let's get to work. Meetings and discussions over the past few months have heightened citizens' awareness, and I want to tell you, I am one of those. I can't speak to anybody else, but I have a heightened awareness as to what is going on where I live. So, Mr. Monk, thank you. Okay, I have thirty seconds. Thank you for being the chair. And I want to end with a quote by Thomas Jefferson. "Well done is better than well said." So, let's keep that in our heads as we move forward. We need to get the job done. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristi Scarborough.
Hello, board members. My name is Kristi Scarborough of the Stonewall District. Brian Hester, you have talked about having a special needs brother and how you supposedly support special education. You know, that makes me want to gag. I've been up here multiple times saying how my son was discriminated against and segregated by Frederick County Public Schools. You didn't do anything about it. You just sat there like you are now, except you had a smirk on your face. In my opinion, you're a hypocrite. I think that you're virtue signaling when you say you care about special education, because it must be one-sided. It must be only some kids you care about and some you don't, because you didn't care about mine. I think that you're the least fit to sit on this board. Michael Lake, at the last meeting, it seems to me that you were confused as to what the difference was between equality and equity. You actually said that if you do not treat people equal, that you are racist. Let me remind you that, as I've already said, I've been up here on a number of occasions talking about my special needs kid that was discriminated against and segregated. You didn't do anything either. So, by your logic, that makes you racist? Just saying, those are your words, not mine. I also want to bring up you deleting text messages. Well, at least I can assume, because I FOIA requested them, and I'm still waiting for them. I don't know where they are. I got Ellen's, but I didn't get yours. It was a text that you guys tried to hide where you called, you referenced Graber saying, "God forbid he has any children." I don't think that's appropriate. I'm just going to say it like that. Correct me if I'm wrong, but every single one of you attended training about not deleting text messages that are subject to FOIA requests, right? Now, I fully expect that you will be contacting your service provider for those texts that I requested that you possibly deleted. If you don't, I'll subpoena them, and then you'll have to explain why tax dollars are being wasted, because you'd rather act with deliberate indifference. I mean, you had the training about this, so at this point, you have consciously deleted texts and showed a reckless disregard for the consequences in doing so. Yikes, Mikey. Do we need to have another training session for you guys? Who else is up here dirty deleting public information? Hester, is it you? Oh, you better not let me catch you slipping, because I will be on you like something else. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Clay Perry.
Good evening, everyone. Brandon, Clay Perry, Back Creek District. I think the previous speakers have summarized the two key words of what we need is awareness and transparency. Della spoke about the heightened awareness in our community of what's happening in our schools, as reflected by a seventy percent win for Governor Youngkin in Frederick County. And that was all about parents' rights and understanding what's in our schools. So, that awareness is out there. But it's more about also transparency, and that relates to both topics tonight, which is the budget and to the books. Brandon, I heard you speak earlier about going to the principal to get the books, and I appreciate you giving us that guidance. I am a little confused on that. If we have a school library, the librarian should have a database as to what schools are in the library, how many copies of that school is, who's checked it out. So, we should simply be able to get just a list of names of books and the authors and the titles and the quantity of those books in our libraries without having to bog down our principals, to bog down our administration. It should be a simple public list of this is what's in our libraries at our public schools, at each of the schools, and what's in each of those libraries. It seems pretty transparent, pretty simple, and pretty cost-effective to do that, and then the parents can go do their own research on those books as to whether they feel that they're appropriate or not, and they can spend their own time doing that, which I'm sure many of them would like to do. So, that's one request I'd ask you to look into, is why can't we just make a simple list of the names available? If they want to see the physical copy of the books, I realize that's a more involved procedure, but just getting a list of the names would be highly appreciated. And I'll speak to Delegate LaRocque and Delegate Wiley about that and see if they can offer any help as well, if that becomes a challenge, but hopefully it's not a challenge. The second part about transparency is around the budget. And I'm going to ask some questions, and David, I know I won't get a response, because the typical pattern is we speak and there's no response. And maybe a week or two from now, we'll come back with a misinformation video or something like that correcting us when we can't defend ourselves. But the question comes, you know, who creates the budget? Does the Board of Supervisors create the budget? Or does Frederick County Public Schools, specifically the administration and the Finance Committee, create the budget? If, I'll answer that question. If I'm wrong, please correct me later. But generally speaking, it is the Frederick County Public School System that creates the budget. So, who determines then how much money goes towards teacher raises, making sure they get their raises, making sure that we spend money on special education, and we don't waste it anywhere? How's that money allocated? Is that the Board of Supervisors, or is that the Frederick County Public School System? I think I'll answer correctly that generally speaking, that's the Frederick County Public School System. So, you have the control to make sure that teachers get raises, that special education is funded, while making sure money is not wasted in other areas of the business, and we can still be fiscally responsible as a county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Jenkins.
Good evening. I'm spending more time with you all than my husband these days, so I'm going to steer this in a little bit of a different direction, because I'm kind of tired of talking about the same thing. What you have there is a flyer. The INREP Teachers, Admin, and the Ark of Northern Chano Valley and I would like to invite you all, the school board members, to an open house at INREP on May eleventh at 10:00 a.m. INREP is a Frederick County school that serves students of all grade levels, including pre-K, who have more complex special need cases. Visiting INREP will give another look for the whole board into the wide spectrum of sped services and the children they serve and the staff our kids do heavily rely on. And I noticed that there's one person missing, and I hope you're listening at home, Ms. Martin, because I think you need to be there as well. So, I just want to, that's all. I don't need the full three minutes.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Candy Mitchell.
Good evening. My name is Candy Mitchell, and I'm a lifetime resident of Frederick County, currently residing in the Gainesboro District. in the Gainesboro District. I'm a product of Frederick County Public Schools, James Wood Class of 91. My daughter is a product of Frederick County Public Schools, Sherrando Class of 2018. We were both blessed with a good education, prepared us for college and the workforce. This was due in large part to collaborative efforts of the sitting superintendent, school board, and board of supervisors. Unfortunately, that no longer seems to be the case. There seems to be a divide on both boards, based more on personal and political agendas than on the common good of FCPS. I would first like to personally thank those members who were present at last week's board of supervisors meeting, Ms. White, Mr. Hester, Vice Chair Comstock. Not only were you present and spoke on behalf of Frederick County Public Schools, but you also stood shoulder to shoulder with Dr. Savine and Ms. Camry, ready and willing to answer any and all questions. I'm sorry your answers didn't appear to be good enough. There's no, I've watched so many of you take a stand for what you believe in, and I know that the decisions that you have to make are not easy ones. But you have shown with both words and actions where you stand. I've watched many of you take unnecessary and unwarranted attacks on yourselves and your family, and you've handled it with unbelievable grace and dignity. Under no circumstance do I want to disrespect the precedents that you've set, but frankly, I'm angry and I'm frustrated, and some tough questions need to be asked, which leads me to my next point. Where exactly were you, Mr. Monk? Now, I understand that you can't attend every meeting. There are quite a few people who want it to be here tonight, and they have to attend their children's sporting events. Life happens. Work happens. Families happen. But it seems that you have a pattern of not being present when the going gets tough and you have to make a stance. It appears you were the only one sharing information with certain supervisors prior to the meeting, and the only one they wanted to hear from, even though the most qualified people were standing in the room. I left the meeting shaking my head, trying to figure out what's next. Over the past week, I've heard a lot of conversations about you, some good, some bad, but from it to very distinct questions that only you can answer. Are you just young and inexperienced and don't realize you're getting played? Or do you know exactly what you're doing? And you're playing games to further your own political aspirations and your personal self-serving agendas? As the chair of the school board and a member of the board that voted for a fully funded budget, your actions speak louder than words, and your words no longer hold meaning. They're empty promises. I'll be curious to see what your actions are tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Mitchell. Our next speaker is Laura Gerald.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Laura Gerald, and I'm a resident of the Opeckin District. I just wanted to take a minute to thank Mr. Comstock, Mr. Hester, Ms. White, and Mr. Lake for your continued public support of the school board's proposed budget. The image of the three of you who were at last week's board of supervisors meeting, standing with Dr. Savine and Ms. Camry, was a powerful moment. The leadership you have shown in the absence of our chairs' leadership is recognized and appreciated. Mr. McCarthy's refusal to allow any of you to address their questions speaks volumes about their cry for transparency. Transparency would have been allowing you to answer their questions and then proceeding to vote on the budget. We are standing with you again. Thank you.
Our next speaker is William Schaefer.
William Schaefer, Shawnee District. Speaking of games, Ms. White, quote, "I hope the additional details about where and why the proposed cuts will be felt will help encourage the last few holdouts will do the right thing and fully fund our schools," end quote. To hold hostage additional funding for special education and CTE is nothing less despicable. Mr. Lake, you said if we treated people differently, we're racist. Since race had nothing to do with the decision to treat kids differently and separate them from their peers, I can only assume by the same logic, those responsible are bigoted. Mr. Hester, you can talk a great deal about special needs being so near and dear, but when it came time to step up, you voted not to give the money to special needs teachers, but to the administrators. Dr. Savine, in your video, you said the Essor money that was set aside for Ailer could be repurposed for the HVAC at Armel. My child happens to attend Armel. We got an email weeks ago stating the HVAC at Armel was getting worked on, and that our children should wear sweaters because it was going to be cold. Is that the same Essor money that is being reallocated without an additional public notice and comment period? Mr. Comstock, have you ever sold a house without full disclosure and cost? Then why would the public you serve deserve any less? The public has no clue as to the true cost of running this school district, and most of you seem hell-bent on keeping it that way. Mr. Edwards, did you actually state in an official FOIA request or response that the Frederick County Public Schools does not keep SDS sheets on the hand sanitizers bought, kept, and distributed by FCPS as required by OSHA 29 CFR Part 1910 as adopted in the Virginia Code? I'd like to thank Mr. Monk and Mr. Atkins. Out of all the emails I've sent to this entire school board, you two are the only ones that have ever responded.
Our next speaker is Justin Edens.
Justin Edens from the Stonewall District. Since Dr. Savine is all about posting videos of issues he has with what people are saying about his budget and sending out false statements to the Winchester Star, I'm going to take my time to point out some of his issues and false information he has spread. For everybody that worships the ground he walks on for his budget and thinks he does no wrong, I would like you to ask yourself a few questions. If he cared so much for the teachers of this county, then why are they the first ones he threatens to cut their pay or jobs? Why doesn't he trim the fat from the over $60 million spent on administrators? Why, instead of giving the state minimum 5% to the teachers, is he not giving the cut that was approved by the administrators to the teachers? The truth is, he doesn't care about the teachers or the children of this county. He is a politician, but unfortunately, he cannot be voted in or out, although the people who keep him in office can. As far as the budget is concerned, I would love to see a 7% to 10% raise for teachers. They are the ones that deserve it. Not the people making well over $100,000 a year, but the people who have put in work for 20 years and are making less than $60,000 and have no teaching assistance. Give the money to the people who do not get support from the administrators in the school system. The board here does not want to be micromanaged, and I get it, but I have a problem with the job that you are doing. And I do not trust that this board is okay when they are masking children, segregating children, allowing children access to pornography, and promoting racism in our schools through deep equity learning. Any school board member who supports Dr. Savine supports this, because this is what's been happening in our schools. For those of you who think equity and CRT are not being taught, just need to re-watch the young man that spoke at the board of supervisors meeting a few weeks ago. He said CRT wasn't being taught, and then continued to talk about the white people that were on the board. Or the teacher who spoke about how segregation was okay at a school board meeting because the kids being segregated were white. It is beyond time for Dr. Savine and his progressive ideology to go, and if this board will not stand up to do it, we will find and support a board that will. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Katie Bacher.
My name is Katie Bacher, and I'm an aide at Robert E. Ailer. I'm here this evening to thank Mrs. White, Mr. Comstock, Mr. Hester for attending the board of supervisors meeting and speaking in favor of the budget. This has been a long and often contentious process, and I want to bring forth the concerns of my building, Ailer, and those of the people that I work with. Many individuals, both teachers and classified staff, and I'm talking about custodians, aides, the people who work in the kitchen, all of those people, secretaries, are concerned, and they're coming to me with questions about their jobs and their contracts. And when I'm talking about their jobs and their contracts, I'm talking about their livelihoods and their families. They just want to know what's going to happen, and it's up to you all to decide what's going to happen. If there are no contracts, and there aren't enough teachers, and there aren't enough classified staff, and everybody can sit there and laugh, but that is a very real possibility that some of these buildings aren't going to have enough people to run them. What's going to happen then? Think about not only budget transparency, let's talk about political transparency here, okay? We've got a step beyond that. The fact that you all are playing a political game with people's very livelihoods is a real shame. Please think about this tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Eric Reifinger.
Hi there, board members. Eric Reifinger, Shawnee District. I'm here tonight because I want to say thank you to Dr. Savine, Brian, Bradley, Ellen, Mr. Lake. I know you probably had some stuff going on, but I know you support the schools. And to Mrs. Camry, thank you to all of you for being at the board of supervisors meeting last week to show support for the school budget that your board voted to pass to help fund our schools for all of the needs that are necessary in our schools. And Brandon, I really hope that you're going to be there tomorrow. We've talked previously. I know you support our schools. I hope you're there. I hope you recognize the importance of you being at those board or supervisors meetings when school board matters are being discussed, similar to how Jay was at those meetings and how Shante was at the meetings at the last time budget season rolled around. That was the big thing I really wanted to talk about, just saying thanks to you all. There were a few things I heard from some other speakers tonight that I feel like need to be corrected. As a product of Frederick County Public Schools, civil war is taught in middle school. That's something that gets brought up at that time. So I know elementary school, it may be sometimes for that to be brought up, but really gets dug into during middle school. And hate to break it to you, but the Confederates were the bad guys. They were the ones that revolted against the Union that we are still functioning under. So, and they were also the ones that had in their constitution upholding the institution of slavery. So, yeah, they were the bad guys. That's in all the history books. So just wanted to bring that up. Oh, still got a minute left. For the library books, just because you may not agree with the information in the books in certain libraries doesn't mean it can be removed from the library, especially a public library. You can look at Island Trees versus Pico, 1982, to see that that violates the First Amendment rights of the students that are attending those public schools. So just because you may not agree with information that may have details about people that may be homosexual, things that may deal with transgender issues, or sexual issues, political issues, that doesn't mean it should be removed from the public schools, because then you're also violating the rights of the students that may want to further their own individual education about those matters. So, yeah, keep doing what some of you are doing. Respect a lot of you on this board. Hope that all of you can demonstrate respect, even if you do disagree with them, even though you've stated you cannot respect somebody if you disagree with them, Mr. Atkins. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Dredsky.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Savine. I guess we've heard all kinds of stuff tonight, and one of the things I thought about when I put my shirt on with transparency is what does it mean? And I think we're starting to make progress in that area, because I certainly was excited to see the first video go up of one of these board meetings on the public website. I would like to request some additional transparency. I would like to see the committee meetings also broadcast and posted, or at least a video of them posted, even if they're not live when they happen. And along with that, for both of the meetings, I would really love to see posted in advance of the meetings, the packets that have like the meeting minutes and the things that you do consent agenda approvals on. I noticed that the board of supervisors does a really good job of that. If I go to their site and I want to see what's on the agenda for the consent agenda, I can go look, and I can see a copy of all of that. And that way, I really actually get an understanding before I get there of what they're talking about. And there are lots of things that all of you do a consent agenda of, like things of the new policy readings at the last meeting. I was excited to come here, hoping I would hear what they were, but you all had read them, but it wasn't available for everyone else. And I realized, once it's approved, it'll go into the policy section on the website. But it would be really helpful to have that information, and I would really like to request that to help get more of the transparency that we're looking for. As a parent and a citizen who's been going to all of these meetings, I've heard some things on both sides, and I just want to mention for the benefit of the folks who haven't been to as many of the meetings as I've been to, that I really feel like our budget issue right now with the board of supervisors really isn't about whether they can afford it. Our county has the funds to be able to support the fully requested amount of money. That's not what the issue's about. It's about making sure that everyone knows how the money is being spent. And I realize that that's new this year, but I'm hoping that all of you will be able to continue to provide those answers. And for the folks who don't seem to understand Mr. Monk not being at the meeting, at the board of supervisors meeting, I've sat in enough courtrooms, unfortunately, or watched enough TV to know that the issue wasn't that they only wanted to hear from you, Mr. Monk. They just wanted you to be present because you were part of the correspondence. Had you been there, then they certainly would have not asked you to necessarily answer the questions, maybe to validate some fact of it. But Mr. McCarthy's an attorney, so he's real big on not doing hearsay and stuff, and I think sometimes we forget that. And I think that there are a number of folks even on this board who've misunderstood that, that that's really what was going on, and that's why everyone was not allowed to speak at that meeting. It's unfortunate, but I'm hopeful it'll all get cleared up tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pam Kennedy.
Pam Kennedy, Gainesboro. The topic is books. It appears that post-COVID Frederick County is now inflamed, engulfed by another virus, bibliophobia, fear or hatred of books. In the past, this has led to censorship and book burning. Honestly, for those in attendance at the last board of supervisors meeting, it was like a return to the days of old, in this case, the Spanish Inquisition or the Nazi burning of books on May 10, 1933. This bibliocast is a perfect metaphor for demagoguery, censorship, and suppression, or as experts call it, cultural genocide. The same people who loudly vent about the content of books that they pick and choose select passages from, and we heard those, do they as closely monitor the social media use of their children? Probably not, because they too are drawn to salacious, dangerous, and marginalized content. All of these reactions are at base fear reactions. Is this rational fear where there is a real present danger? Is it a primal fear, part of our brain's programming? Or is it irrational fear, which doesn't make logical sense and really causes knee-jerk reactions, many of which we've heard and seen? I suspect this reaction to books is number three, irrational, and stems from a real sense of powerlessness. But the screaming for censorship and making wild unjust accusations get to the root of powerlessness? No. It temporarily feels good, but ultimately, you remain in the same position. Are there other more effective avenues to pursue? Yeah, there are a lot. But that entails a willingness to cooperate and compromise when conflict seems so much more satisfying. The long arm of history teaches us much about short-term gains and long-term victories. It would be good for citizens to relearn those lessons. A people without the knowledge of their past is like a tree without its roots.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's my pleasure to present this month's comments from the Earlier this evening, the, the board approved a number of proclamations recognizing teachers as a part of Teacher Appreciation Week and National Teacher Day. We also acknowledged school nutrition employees as a part of the School Nutrition Employee Week and school nurses as a part of the School Nurse Day. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank all of our teachers, school nutrition employees, and nurses for the many things they do each day to support our students. The last couple of years have been extremely difficult for everyone in public education due to the pandemic, and I want to again publicly recognize all of our staff members and thank them for their commitment to our students and for their patience and flexibility they continue to display each and every day. Unfortunately, this year's budget process has proven to be quite challenging and has left many staff members feeling uncertain about the future. Please know that you are greatly valued and your hard work and dedication does not go unnoticed. We thank you. Continuing that theme of extending our appreciation, one way to help show staff they are appreciated is to participate in the FCPS Season of Celebration of Success, which launched yesterday and continues through June the 3rd. Students, parents, teachers, staff, and members of the community are invited to participate in the Season of Celebration and Success by sharing their student success stories from the 2021-22 school year and to also thank FCPS employees who have made a difference for students this year. More information, including an electronic form that can be used to submit stories and recognize staff as a part of the Season of Celebration and Success, can be found on the school division's website. Also like to report that Frederick County Public Schools had 11 students selected as members of the Virginia Choral Directors Association 2022, all Virginia Chorus. Participants included James Wood High School students Caleb Athie, Katryia Powers, as well as Millbrook High School students Michael Bromley, Ainsley Deegan, Cameron Gresko, Avery Michaelvee, Cohen Melnikoff, Madison Murphy, Ania Phillips, John Redden, and Carly Wolfrey. The chorus performed a concert in Henrico on April the 23rd. Also like to share that James Wood High School senior Aubrey Grove is one of 53 local artists selected to have a piece of artwork displayed on a banner in downtown Winchester as a part of the Artscape 13. Grove's banner featuring her painting R68 will go on display later this summer. Also, FCPS Director of Facility Services, our own Tim Christman, also had a painting entitled National Symphony Number One selected to be part of the Artscape this year. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that concludes my report for this month.
Thank you, Dr. Savine. Next, we have our Assistant Superintendent for Administration, Mr. Bach.
After I follow that artwork there.
It's a requirement of staff. Mr. Christman has been able to do it.
I don't know. Mr. Christmas is pretty talented. I don't know how I could compete with that, so. But good evening, Mr. Chairman and Dr. Savine and members of the board. My membership report this evening is for the enrollment from April 30th, 2022. Since my last report here on March 31st, enrollment has decreased from 3,992 students, or I'm sorry, 13,992 to 13,986, which is a decrease of six students. The most notable decreases that we observed were four students at Middletown Elementary, three students at Admiral Byrd, Armel, and Bass Hoover. The most notable increases in enrollment were six students at Indian Hollow and four students at Greenwood Mills. The grade level that saw the most significant change in enrollment since my last report was eighth grade with a decrease of nine students there, followed by third grade with a decrease in five students. The grade level that saw the most notable increases were ninth grade with nine students and sixth grade with four students. Just want to remind you, Board members, we do have several schools that are currently over enrollment capacity, and those schools are as follows. James Wood High School at 112%, Millbrook High School at 113%, Charando at 118%, Armel, Armel 112%, Bass Hoover 105%, Jordan Springs at 104%, and finally, Middletown Elementary School at 108%. This concludes my update on enrollment, Mr. Chairman, and I'm happy to answer any questions Board members might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bach. Any questions for Mr. Bach? Thank you, Mr. Bach.
Thank you.
Our next report is Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Dr. Angelo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I don't have a report this evening, but I would like to just take a moment to say, first of all, congratulations to those who were recognized this evening and would echo your comments that it's really pretty cool to see that it represented, those achievements represented both athletics, not both, but athletics, the arts, and academics. And it's very gratifying to see our students back in front of us being recognized again. Would also just like to take a moment to say thank you to our teachers, our school nurses, and our school nutrition staff who make sure that our students are supported and well-cared for each and every day. So, thank you to those groups as well.
Thank you, Dr. Angelo. All right. That'll move us to unfinished business. We have a few board bylaws, policies that are before us. This would be the second reading of those, and we'll start with unfinished A, Policy 108P. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt Policy 108P, School Board Bylaws, Chairman and Vice Chairman Election and Duties.
All right. We have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and properly seconded to amend Policy 108P, School Board Bylaws, Chairman and Vice Chairman Election and Duties. This would constitute that second reading of it. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the amendment of Policy 108P, School Board Bylaws, Chairman and Vice Chairman Election and Duties, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That will pass. Second reading of Policy 112P, School Board Bylaws, School Board Meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the amended Policy 112P, School Board Bylaws, School Board Meetings.
Do we have a motion before us? Is there a second?
Okay.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to amend Policy 112P, School Board Bylaws, School Board Meetings. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving Policy 112P, School Board Bylaws, School Board Meetings? Do we have a motion before us? Is there a second?
Okay.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to amend Policy 112P, School Board Bylaws, School Board Meetings. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving Policy 112P, School Board Bylaws, School Board Meetings as before us, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right. That passes. Next is Policy 115P, School Board Bylaws, Order of Business Quorum Rules.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the amended Policy 115P, School Board Bylaws, Order of Business Quorum Rules.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we amend Policy 115P, School Board Bylaws, Order of Business Quorum Rules as amended before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the amendment of Policy 115P, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes as well. Next, we have Policy 118P, School Board Bylaws, Special Meetings. Do we have a motion?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, this is, Mr. Edwards, is this a removal of policy? Should I make this motion different?
No. If you just say adopt 118P, we'll know it's the amended version. Okay, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the amended Policy 118P, School Board Bylaws, Special Meetings.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. It's been made and properly seconded that we amend Policy 118P, School Board Special Meetings. Mr. Comstock referenced that this would be the removal of a policy, and that's accurate, but there is inclusion of that similar language in another policy, so it's not as if the policy is being taken vacated or taken away fully. It's just being relocated. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of 118P, School Board Bylaws, Special Meetings and the amendment before us, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That passes as well. Policy 120P, School Board Bylaws, Policy Adoption.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Policy 120P, School Board Bylaws, Policy Adoption.
Second.
All right. Well, there's a motion to adopt the amendment to Policy 120P, School Board Bylaws, Policy Adoption. It's been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the amendment of 120P, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right. That passes. And then, Policy 126P, School Board Bylaws, School Board Member in Service Activities.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the amended Policy 126P, School Board Bylaws, School Board Member in Service Activities.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion seconded to amend Policy 126P. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of 126P, School Board Bylaws, School Board Member in Service Activities as amended before us, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That completes our amendments and unfinished business. We'll now move to new business, and that is Building and Grounds Committee Report. Mr. Comstock.
Mr. Chairman, the Buildings and Grounds Committee met in the Dr. Milton E. Wright Board Meeting Room on February 22nd. That's not accurate.
We may very well have met at that time, but...
On April 26th.
April, that's correct.
Thank you. We met on April 26th. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Bach reviewed a recommendation from the Old Ailer Middle School Repurposing Committee to declare the old Robert E. Ailer Middle School as surplus. The recommendation comes after the committee determined it is not financially feasible to repurpose the building as a high school academy. Mr. Bach stated the tentative plan is to have the building ready to surplus to Frederick County as early as August 1st. The committee expressed a desire to have the full board consider the resolution to surplus the building before the end of the calendar year. Mr. Bach also reported on plans to reallocate the $7.2 million in SIR III funds that was earmarked for several projects at the former Robert E. Ailer Middle School to replacing the HVAC system at Armel Elementary School. Mr. Bach and Coordinator of Planning and Development Wayne Lee reviewed the parking plans to be used at James Wood High School during the renovation of the school. They also presented a report on growth and development occurring in Frederick County. Finally, Mr. Bach reviewed recommendations to award contracts related to the replacement and installation of heat pumps and console units at Charando High School. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on April 26th? Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, we have three action items coming out of our meeting. The first is that I would move that we recommend award, or that we award a contract valued at $399,548 to Have Tech Parts Division LLC as a result of IFB 22005 Equipment Only Charando High School Heat Pump Replacement.
All right. We have a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? I'll add that I did ask our finance team, and so this did come in under budget, so excited about that. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the motion that Mr. Comstock has put forward to award a project. Any, all in favor of doing so, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right. It's been awarded.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we proceed with awarding a contract valued at $294,430 to Acme Mechanical Contractors of Virginia Inc. as a result of IFB 22008 Installation of Heat Pumps and Console Units at Charando High School.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been made and properly seconded that we award around $240,000 to Acme for some work at Charando High School. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that this one actually came under budget as well.
There we go. Love to hear that. Any further discussion? All right. We'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right. That's awarded.
And Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the minutes from the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting held on April 26th, 2022.
All right. We have a motion to approve the minutes, and I just checked and they do have the correct date in them.
Thank you.
Do we have a second to do so?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and properly seconded that we approve the minutes of the Building and Grounds Committee meeting for April 26th, 2022. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, we have the Instruction Committee report.
Yes. The Instruction Committee met at the Frederick County Public Schools Administration Building on April 26th. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Director of Special Instruction Services, Michelle Williams-Sandy, reviewed the local special education plan for 2022-23 and requested approval of the Special Education Advisory Committee members for 2022-23. In addition, Mr. Bach reviewed the proposed student fees for 2022-23, and Director of Elementary Instructional Services, Jerry Swager, reviewed the recommended textbook program for elementary health instruction within a general education classroom. Mrs. Swager reported the textbook programs under consideration were made available for public review and comment from January 10, 2022, through February 18, 2022, and both the Elementary Health Textbook Adoption Committee and the Elementary Instruction Team are recommending the adoption of ETR Health Smart K5. The program will be purchased in a digital format with teachers and students having access to their corresponding grade level materials. The digital format will also allow the automatic updates and revisions to the program. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Buildings, it was covered at the Instruction Committee meeting held on April 26th?
I do. Mr. Hester or Dr. Savine, I saw that it was available for public comment and appreciate that. The textbook, ETR Health Smart K through 5, just want to confirm that there was no concern about the book that, from public.
I'll invite Dr. Angelo, and I believe Mrs. Swager is here. I want to make sure there's accuracy. Mrs. Swager, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium.
I don't know if you could hear my question. I'm happy to...
Right in my ear, so I didn't hear your question.
Yep. So just on the ETR Health Smart K through 5, I saw, and then Mr. Hester also shared, and I think I even encouraged folks to provide feedback, just want to confirm that there was no negative public comment around, or concern around the book.
There weren't concerns or negative feedback. It was more for folks who voted, or who not voted, but provided feedback that they were torn, or they weren't necessarily sure that we needed to adopt. It was a decision of, do we just keep what we have and not adopt something new? 85% of the people who reviewed the program and provided feedback indicated that they felt like we needed to move forward with the new program because of outdated material in the old program.
Great. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong. This came under budget also.
Yes.
That's a trend.
Questions submitted by Mr. Monk regarding position vacancies and the placement of budgeted positions. Mrs. Mrs. Camery reviewed the responses provided to questions Frederick County Supervisor Doug McCarthy shared with Mr. Monk last week during the FY23 Budget and S R 3 Funds. Mrs. Camery also reviewed when discussing, reviewed when discussions regarding the S R 3 Funds for renovations at the former Robert E. Ailer Middle School were held with board members as well as the allowable uses for S R 3 Funds. She also reviewed the required process the school division has followed in order to utilize the funds. In addition, Mrs. Camery addressed inaccurate statements made by Frederick County Supervisor Josh Ludwig regarding proposed salary increases. Finally, Assistant Director of Finance Kristen Anderson reported there will be no increase in health insurance premiums for F C P S employees in FY23. She stated after discussions with the division's health insurance carrier, the 5% increase in premiums will not need to be passed on to employees. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Finance Committee meeting held on May 2nd? If not, we did have one action item come out of that, which is to recommend approval of the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on May 2nd, 2022.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Next on our agenda, New Business Item D, Authorized Signatures on State Reports. Dr. Savine.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before you, you have a memorandum entitled Authorized Signatures on State Reports. It's my recommendation for the approval of Dr. Jim Angelo, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, and Mr. Vernon Bach, Assistant Superintendent for Administration, as authorized signatories on state reports in the absence of the superintendent through June 30, 2023.
All right, thank you, Dr. Savine. Do we have a motion?
We need action on this? Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I recommend, per Dr. Savine's recommendation, the approval of Dr. James Angelo, Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, and Mr. Vernon Bach, Assistant Superintendent for Administration, as authorized signatories on state reports in the absence of the superintendent through June 30, 2023.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been made and properly seconded to approve the authorization of authorized signatures on state reports. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of the approval of the authorized signatures on state reports as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. All right, next we'll move to the school calendar. Dr. Savine.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll invite Mr. Vernon Bach forward, Assistant Superintendent for Administration, to elaborate as he's coming forward. I'll just reference for board's benefit and public's benefit. The Calendar Committee, which represents one of our largest, most diverse committees of the school division, last year brought forward because of complications and delays through the pandemic, they brought forward a calendar that was approved by the board, which represented two academic calendar years. This academic year, 2021-22, as well as the next academic year, which is 22-23. Mr. Bach, as you can see, you have a memorandum in front of you. There are a few slight adjustments, just corrections to make, so we have that before you. I'll yield the floor to Mr. Bach this time.
Thank you, Dr. Savine. I wish I could stick with the current theme of the evening with being under budget on this item, but I'm not sure how to do that with the calendar. So, anyway, without, with that being, with that being said, Dr. Savine, I just wanted to reiterate, obviously, this calendar's been approved for two years. And upon review of the, of next year's school calendar, we noticed a slight error. The 2023, in the date for the 2023 school closure for the Apple Blossom Festival. I will deviate for just a second. After being gone from the community for 21 years, it was a real treat this past weekend to experience Apple Blossom again as a family. So, you know, with that said, we did need to jump back into the calendar and make you aware of this correction. The date that we did have scheduled on the calendar was April 28th. We did a lot of background and legwork on this and realized that it really should be May 7, 2023, that we should have our school closure for Apple Blossom. So, we needed to bring that to your attention. Also, we are proposing a change with convocation, recognizing that it's our desire to give teachers more time in their classroom to prepare for the upcoming school year. And so, rather than having a half-day for teachers to come together for convocation, we're proposing that that be a full teacher workday in the calendar, and that would be on Wednesday, August 10. And again, the purpose of that is giving more time for teachers to prepare for the upcoming school year. And then finally, slight change and adjustment to the Millbrook graduation time. The date will remain the same. That'll stay June 2, 2023. But Ms. Alten Dorff really had a desire to bring her time in line with the other two high schools, and therefore, we would change the time from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Attached to the memorandum, obviously, is a document, a calendar, a proposed mock-up of the calendar, and you can see in red where we've made those adjustments. Happy to answer any questions that board members might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bach. Questions for our Assistant Superintendent of Instruction?
Mr. Bach, my question is, I know that some members of the community have expressed concern wanting to have Veterans Day to honor those who have served, and I don't have the calendar up in front of me. Has that been recognized?
That has not been addressed in this calendar. You know, if that's a desire of the committee moving forward, you know, we would address that through the committee.
Would that be something, you know, we could look at maybe to, you know, get those teachers, you know, that'd be a great time. You know, it's in the middle of the month, and there in November, you know, maybe something to look forward to?
If that would be the full board's desire, that we revisit that with the Calendar Committee, we could certainly revisit that if that's the board's desire.
Mr. Chairman, would that be something we could make a motion on, to at least look at that?
Yeah, I, I know I'm in support of visiting it, looking at it, seeing what we can do. Dr. Savine, would it be good just to get a pulse check before we, or how?
I think that would be beneficial. Certainly, we value the importance of Veterans Day, and I know previously, while it has been a day of attendance for students, it is a point of focus in terms of remembrance of our veterans, and it is a nice historical day in our schools that has rich instructional value there. But if it is a desire of the board, I would just ask that, as we look at the total instructional days, recognizing that you'll have to decide on a day that you want to convert back that is currently in the calendar as a, as a holiday.
And from my perspective, just as an individual board member, I think, you know, if it's not a holiday, I think it would be important, and I know there's some instances of, you know, information and instruction around it. I think it would be helpful to provide some of that and make sure it's division-wide. That way, all of our students have the opportunity to understand a little, at a greater level, the significance of that. Other boards, feedback or thoughts on that, so we can provide some direction to our team?
Mr. Chairman, my only direction on that would be, that I'd like to see come through on that would be to actually, you know, talk to the teachers, the administration, and kind of see what their thoughts are on it, when, what day would be best for them. You know, I definitely want to look out for them as well on that. Maybe put a poll out.
Mr. Chairman, I know there are a lot of competing interests when it comes down to calendar, and I know people who've served on the committees, and I know that everyone there comes with their own personal...
People are very passionate about the calendar.
They are. People are very passionate about it. I know. So, maybe, maybe if it's just something you could bring up at the next Calendar Committee as a discussion point, and kind of get the pulse from those committee members.
I'd be happy to do that.
If that's okay.
For clarity's sake, you know, right now, we were moving forward with the impression or the understanding that the calendar was set, and are we, is the board recommending that as we go through next year with the Calendar Committee and Mr. Bach reconvene, we engage in that conversation? Is that?
Yes, sir.
And that would be for the upcoming school year, not, or not this coming school year, but the following school year?
Correct.
Okay.
I think additionally, would love to see some information about how we can make sure that division-wide, there's a recognition of that, you know, if school is in session that day as well.
That's good.
And I did have a, you've got a question? I know you shared, and you've got a lot of dates and numbers before you, but you shared May 7th, May 5th is the new Apple Blossom Friday.
I'm sorry, yes, that was an error. The 7th is Mother's Day, and so it would be that 5th, so thank you for catching that.
That's an important date as well.
It is very important, but you're right, May 5th would be the school closure. Thank you.
All right, additional feedback. I think this is something that we would need to put to a vote if there's no further questions for Mr. Bach.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would adopt the amended 2022-2023 school calendar as presented.
All right, all right, there's been a motion before us, and a second to adopt the amended 2022-2023 school calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the amended school calendar, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. All right, we have an amended calendar. Thank you. Next is the Shinnon Valley Migrant Education Program Participating Regional Member Certification. Dr. Savine.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as many of you sit on this board, you recognize this time of year is on an annual basis. So, we bring before you the migrant education program, which is actually sponsored by James Madison University, that serves as a fiscal agent. It is a regional program. It provides support and educational resources for migrant workers, for, in particular, students that may be enrolled in Frederick County Public Schools. We have not had any migrant students that have taken advantage of this, or to my knowledge. However, I do recommend that, as we review on an annual basis, we consider approving this because in the event that we had a migrant student that needed these types of resources, it would be available to them.
Thank you. So, with that, do we have a motion to approve the member, program member certification for the 2022-2023 year?
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and properly seconded to approve the Shinnon Valley Migrant Education Program 2022-2023 Participating Regional Program Member Certification. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, that is approved. The next items on our agenda, we've covered in our consent agenda, but do want to speak to Teacher Appreciation Week and School Nutrition Employee Week this week, May the 2nd through the 6th, obviously vital components of the work that we do day in and day out with our students. You know, I think one of the challenges that is talked about is students that are hungry aren't able to learn, and so the school nutrition professionals are vitally important to that, and sometimes that's the only nutritious meals that they receive throughout the week. So, appreciate their support, and obviously, the work of our teachers as they work to share their wisdom and insight among our students and during what has been a difficult couple of years for everyone, especially teachers. In addition to that, National School Nurse Day, which is May the 11th, is coming up, and we provided a proclamation for that. Obviously, during the pandemic, that role took on a variety of additional responsibilities, and so appreciate the work that our school nurses do. It's special work. They could work in our healthcare system, but they've chosen to work with students in this way, and appreciate all that they do to work with our students. With that, we'll move to board member comments. Are there any?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Adkins.
It's going to be kind of lengthy. First, I'd like to recognize all those students who, and their achievements, who were up here tonight. You know, that's awesome, you know, getting to celebrate the achievements of those in our school system. And, you know, even Mr. Crispin, that's pretty cool. I didn't know we had an artist among us. I'd like to go ahead and, you know, pick at this wound right here. The school books that have been brought to my attention, they're disgusting. I mean, flat-out disgusting. I'm ashamed that they're in our schools. There needs to be better management of it. I'd like to know, Dr. Angelo, what the policy is on that, how we get these books in there. You know, and that way, it can be available for public record on how that is. I know that we do have a policy to remove these books. I hope that more parents are involved with this by going to their principals and discussing it. The problem isn't removing these books, it's that the fact that they're in there in the first place. I could bring in a stack of Playboys into the school, drop them off at the library, say they're a donation, and is that modern art now? Is that art of the 20th century? It's disgusting. It shouldn't be in there. In fact, the Constitution of Virginia, Article 8, Section 5.9D, says that the State Board of Education shall have the authority to approve textbooks and instructional aids and materials for the use in courses in the public schools of the Commonwealth. You know, are we purchasing these books, these instructional aids with tax dollars from the local community? Are they donated? Who looks at that? Who approves that? Why do they approve that? Next, last school board meeting, I brought up Policy 429P, the prohibition against harassment and retaliation. On page 3, it says, displaying sexually suggestive, sexually suggestive objects, pictures, cartoons, or posters. Does that fall in to these materials that are found within our libraries? In 2017, House Bill 2191, Delegate La Rock, you know, sent a letter, so a letter was sent to Delegate La Rock to oppose efforts to override the governor's vetoes on this bill. House Bill 2191 would direct State Board of Education to create a policy on sexually explicit books. Schools would be required to warn parents of these materials in the schools. However, I found out that this board, not this board, but the previous board of 2017, opposed this, opposed parents' right to know. I would like an answer from the administration and previous board members on why this happened. Next, going to the budget that everybody keeps talking about. I was the sole person who did vote against the original budget, but it wasn't for the dollar amount. I think that we need that dollar amount. I would love to see that dollar amount, so we could give the teachers, general ed, special ed, all across the board, those step increases that they missed throughout the years. I believe that they do a fantastic job. I think we should be incentivizing our bus drivers, our nutritional aid workers. You know, I'd love to keep those folks here in our county, you know, and I think, you know, that dollar amount for Budget A would go a long way to doing that. Where I disagree is funding the administration on that. Let me be clear in this. I would not give one dime further to the administration until they have accountability for the budget, transparency as presented at the school, or at the Board of Supervisors meeting, till somebody's held to account for segregating our kids in the classroom, the lack of transparency, and these sexually explicit books. You know, it's disgusting. So, there's where I stand on that. Once again, I'm in full support of the dollar amount of the budget, just not where it's going. Thank you.
Further comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hester.
You know, the last couple of weeks have been so frustrating. You know, I first want to thank publicly our, you know, Mr. Lakin, Mr. Comstock, and the whole Finance Department Administration. We've spent hours upon hours working on this budget, and, you know, last Wednesday's Board of Supervisors meeting was very upsetting. There was five of us standing there where we could have given the answer, but they're looking for your answer, Mr. Monk. I just want to apologize to the teachers, staff, the entire school system for the stress that this has, you know, caused on everybody. I mean, it really has caused a lot of stress across the board. And I wholeheartedly am sorry that our county has gotten to this, this point. We were there. We could have had this thing squared up last week. I do hope you're at the meeting tomorrow, Mr. Monk. We went through a, who knows how many questions from downtown, last-minute questions, I might add. It always seems to be the day of that we get questions. Last week, we got questions literally at 10:30 in the morning. We had responses back by 1:30, but it's the day of. I mean, they've had a week since the prior meeting. And it's about questions about the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, literally the day before. And so, just all the misinformation, all the antics between the supervisors, and to be honest with you, Mr. Monk, this falls on you. It really does. So, I hope that we can get to a budget next week, or tomorrow, and we can move forward so these antics aren't causing any more disruption within our school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Other board member comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Comstock.
I'll keep it brief, I think. I just wanted to say, I know it's already been said a couple of times, how great it was to be able to celebrate with our students tonight. I've really missed that, and that's what this is all about. That's what we're here for, all of us. At least, it's what we should be. And so, I'm very appreciative.
And so I'm, I'm very appreciative that we had that opportunity, and I'm appreciative for our students taking the time to come and, and doing the things that they're passionate about and the ways that our staff support them while they find those passions and do those things. That's what we're, that's what we're here to inspire and to do, and so I'm appreciative for that time. Thanks for, thanks for making that happen. Hope to see it happen more often. And I just want to briefly say, you know, we've got the School Nutrition Employees Appreciation and the Teacher Appreciation and the School Nurse Appreciation, and it doesn't get said enough, and I don't think our people hear it enough, but we see you and we appreciate you. We couldn't do this without you. Our, our kids wouldn't be doing the amazing things they're doing without you, and so thank you for doing what you do. Thank you for showing up every day. Thank you for loving our children and, and the children of this community and my children, you know, so thank you for that. Please stay, please keep doing what you're doing. Our community and our people need you, and our kids need you, and so, thanks. And bear with us while we continue to work through this budget thing. Hopefully, we can put a nail in it tomorrow, and, and hopefully, we can get a great situation to, to, to move forward with, so, thanks.
I'm sorry, we could talk to you after the meeting. Do we have additional board member comments?
Yeah, I'll just call out the, all of our good students that participated in Apple Blossom. Was there on Washington Street cheering on the Colonels, the Warriors, the Pioneers, and even a third grader from Gainesboro Elementary, I think she was Junior Miss Frederick County. Oh, man, if I don't get that right, she's gonna, she's my next-door neighbor. But, you know, just good to see good kids doing good things. I was at the Warrior Pride Awards, I'm going to say about two weeks ago, maybe, over at Sherrando. Seventy-three awards, just the good kids doing good things, you know, and not, not anything spectacular, but just being good citizens. And, you know, when you go around to the businesses and, you know, okay, my favorite spot is PAX, and so, you know, you see, you, you go up and you meet these nice polite young people, you know, you ask them what school? It's Sherrando, it's Millbrook, it's the Colonels, you know, it's, and these folks here tonight. I have followed in the past, I've followed Millbrook Girls Basketball to the state championships and seen most of their change, state final games. And, you know, these guys, these, these young ladies are, you know, that's the real deal. They are in it for the right reason. They work hard, and they, you know, if you win a state championship, you know how to work hard. And so somehow, you know, sometimes we parents kind of mess it up, but, you know, the kids keep coming, the kids keep doing what they do, they keep being just good citizens, and just want, want to alternate, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lake.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. White?
It was absolutely delightful to see all the young women and young men up here this, this evening, not only for academic achievements, athletic achievements, and artistic achievements, and that is what makes this public service so special. I would personally like to thank all of our nurses, as a nurse, for being here from the beginning of the pandemic and throughout. We see you, we thank you. School nutrition, I was, I have been a product of a public school system my entire life. I would have not been able to eat if it had not forbid, if it had not been for programs like this, so I am especially thankful for all our nutritional aids, providers, whatever. You, you make the learning possible. Like was said before, you can't teach with hungry students, and absolutely, our teachers. We see you, we value you, we are fighting for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
One last thing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hester?
Since Mr. Lake talked about the basketball team, I have to say, once a wrestler, always a wrestler, and I wrestled in high school, hated wrestling in Sherrando, got my tail handed to me by Jesse Rudolph. He and I are buds today, but I, I actually have the largest picture of myself that I got into the newspaper with growing up, and he's pinning me, so. But, long story short, to get to a state champ, to win a state championship as a wrestler, I mean, any state champion is awesome. Wrestling is super hard. I've been there, done that, never got into states myself, but made it to regionals, and I know how hard it is, and I followed those two guys all season long and was just so impressed that they, they were able to, to pull through with those state championships. So again, congrats to all the sports, but like I said, once a wrestler, always a wrestler, and had to give them kudos.
All right, with that, I do have a few comments. One on the book, oh, Ms. Martin. Okay? Thank you. Ms. Martin. All right. Anything further, Mrs. Martin?
Yeah, but I'm not going to say anything else.
Okay. I do have a few comments, and one is around those books. I will share, I've not had the opportunity to read some of the things that I've heard. I think everyone can agree, it doesn't find its place in our school system. So I, I do appreciate folks bringing those concerns forward and going through the channels to make sure that we can come together as a community in that respect. There was a comment this evening about videos and minutes and agenda packets, and agree and appreciate that concern. I do know the clerk has provided some, you know, agenda packets to folks who requested that in the past, and that's kind of a short-term fix, but for a more long-term fix, this board has agreed to use a system that will house all of that information as well as our videos in one place, beginning in July is our anticipation for that, so I think that will be of benefit not only to our board, but to the greater community, and, and just wanted you to know that that is on its way, so looking forward to that. I did bring up under budget a couple times, and, you know, it's, I'll become a little humorous, I guess. One of the, the reasons that I brought that up is I know, you know, with some of the supply chain issues and the inflation that we have, there are many things that we're seeing increases in, and one of those is our HVAC systems and the work of, you know, any type of construction-type work or trades work, so I think it's positive that those are coming in under budget, even given the fact that we're in kind of the environment that we find ourselves in with some of those increased costs there. And then also wanted to share that, you know, I think it's unfortunate that we live in a day and age where it's easy, easier to get behind a keyboard and share a rumor and just kind of be rude to other folks before we check for facts and understanding or think about how we can be part of the resolution. The past few weeks, there's been some talk about what my role as Chair of the School Board has been as we deal with this budget scenario, and, and we've even heard some of those opinions this evening. Despite the rumors of hidden agendas, here's the truth. Mr. Comstock and I have done everything that we can, and I'm sure other board members would feel the same way about their work as well, to provide information, answers, and make ourselves available to just about anyone who would listen. And I appreciate the Board of Supervisors members who have taken the time to answer those calls and, and meet as well. We've made progress, and I think we could agree, it's not all the progress that we had hoped it would be at this point. And in fact, we're hoping that we could make some further progress over the next few weeks. And we've made progress after our joint meeting of bringing the boards together, and I hope that we continue to, to develop those relationships with board members so we don't find ourselves in situations like this moving forward. And everyone is aware of our intent to, to meet and have those conversations, and during that time, both Mr. Comstock and I have encouraged others to continue their talks and do what they can to share factual information. Any assertion that either of us have asked other board members be intentionally excluded or not responded to is just simply not accurate. No secret meetings, no hidden motives, just working to find, to bring our community together and find a resolution. I'm not one that's going to throw accusations at other people just to land in the paper, but the us versus them mentality is just not helpful. It's not helpful for our students, it's not helpful for our teachers, and we need to move forward. I'm not going to apologize for answering questions and being available to members of the Board of Supervisors during the budget process. In fact, I think that's my role. We're supposed to have open communication, and I'm doing my part to make sure I am available to provide factual answers to any questions that may arise. That's why I've worked side by side with Mrs. Camery and the finance team, Dr. Savine and others to provide answers in writing. I want to make sure that everyone is on the same page, and I believe that the answers that were provided last week in writing to Mr. McCarthy have both he and I on the same page, and I believe that that is helpful in us moving forward to have everyone on that same page. I'm excited to attend tomorrow night's meeting. I've canceled a trip in which we'll be honoring students in the skilled trades to make sure that I'm able to provide any answers to questions or clarify any information that may be helpful, and, and want to make sure that everyone is on the same page in that meeting tomorrow and that we could find some type of resolution that will benefit our community and our students and our employees. With that, any further comments?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All right, thanks, Ms. Martin. A motion to adjourn's been made properly second and all in favor of adjournings except by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we stand adjourned.